Can I just turn on the volume? And now start, so we need 15 seconds.
Yeah, Chief, we're, uh, we've got a proclamation and a couple of other things before the ceremony. So I just wanted to, it was before seven o'clock, I figured if we can get out one minute earlier, then we can get to the Yukon game. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. This is the Monday, April 3rd Town Council meeting of the town of Weathersfield. And would Councilman O'Connor lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Sue, would you do us the honor of attendance tonight?
Councilor Carbone?
Here.
Councilor Clancy?
Here.
Councilor Flores?
Here.
Councilor Hill?
Here.
Councilor Lesser?
Here.
Councilor O'Connor?
Here.
Councilor Pentzlow?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Mazzarella?
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Rell?
Here. Thank you. And Diane, did I see Diane come in?
Yep.
Okay. Diane, if you would join me up here for a proclamation for National Public Health Week.
For those that remember, at the last meeting, we held, Charles Brown from the Health District was here, talked about not only his work over the last three years before he came back in person with us, but he also wanted to share the excitement that is going on at the Health District and all that they're doing, including the, is it the Walk-a-thon that's going on? Is it this month that that's going on?
I'm not sure that started yet, the walking competition. Probably in May?
May.
In May?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sign up.
So Weathersfield can win.
Yes.
You walk everywhere.
We can definitely do that. I don't know if you guys have seen my meter, but it has definitely picked up since the wintertime, and I do feel good about it. And then, do you guys want to join as well? So this is a proclamation for the National Public Health Week. Whereas the American Public Health Association has proclaimed April 3rd through April 9th, 2023, as National Public Health Week. And whereas this year's theme, centering and celebrating cultures in health, feeling like we belong, being part of our communities, and fostering cultural connections supports our health and the quality of our lives. And whereas by building healthier, stronger, and safer places to live, the United States can be the healthiest nation in one generation. And whereas for 28 years, the annual celebration of National Public Health Week reminds us of the fundamental role that our town, state, and local health departments play every day in our health and our communities. Whereas the Health District, in partnership with the four towns, have been dedicated and driven to reduce morbidity and mortality from COVID-19 over the last three years. Whereas the town of Weathersfield, together with its neighboring towns of Rocky Hill, Newington, and Berlin, receives quality public health services through its regional health department, the Central Health District, these fine ladies, now in its 27th year of service. Now therefore, on behalf of the Town Council, I, Michael Rell, Mayor of the town of Weathersfield, do hereby proclaim April 3rd to April 9th as National Public Health Week in Weathersfield. I encourage all citizens to join me in this celebration in acknowledging the critical role of public health in prevention and in helping individuals and communities to achieve and maintain good health. Now, in witness whereof, I hereon do set my hand and the cause of the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be affixed this third day of April 2023. Thank you all for your hard work and dedication on behalf of Weathersfield for the Central Health District.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to give this to you. Say hi to all of you. Thank you for all of you, we appreciate it.
Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Town Manager Presley, Mayor Rell, Deputy Mayor Mazzarella, and councilors. It's an honor to be here with you this evening for this promotional ceremony for the Weathersfield Police Department. My vision continues to be the premier law enforcement agency in Hartford County. I said that a year ago when I first came here, and I continue to believe that's where we're going. As an agency, we sought out, our agency, we sought out by others for employment, and an agency that others emulate, and we think we're going in that right direction. Making this vision a reality starts and ends with me. But I can't do it without the assistance of a strong executive leader, mid-level managers, and frontline supervisors. This evening, we continue to progress towards making this vision a reality by swearing in two brand-new lieutenants who have demonstrated a strong work ethic and a commitment to lead others. These promotions took work for them, they resulted from their years of experience in law enforcement, preparation, constant learning, and a willingness to improve themselves and those around them. By accepting these positions, we're taking on more responsibilities, and hopefully will continue to be the future leaders of the Weathersfield Police Department for years to come. But before they are sworn in, I want to thank their families who are in the audience. As you know, and I've said this over and over, families play a crucial role in a police officer's career. As we move forward, they are our foundation, our support system for the officers, and for our agency. So thank you to all the family members here today, I appreciate it. So without further ado, the first officer to be promoted this evening to lieutenant is Sergeant Joseph Beish. Lieutenant Beish is a 14-year law enforcement veteran, starting his career with the Weathersfield Police Department in 2009. During his tenure with the Weathersfield Police Department, he was a canine handler, field training officer, patrol sergeant, training unit supervisor, and our EAP coordinator. Lieutenant Beish holds a master's degree in criminology with a minor in psychology from Central Connecticut State University. Lieutenant Beish is now assigned as the commander of support services, he is call assigned as 430. He's being pinned this evening by his wife Jessica, with the assistance of his daughter Stella, and sons Joey and Lucas. The second officer to be promoted to lieutenant is Officer Richard T. Holton III. Lieutenant Holton, no, red light. He brought his traveling crowd with him, I can see. Lieutenant Holton is a 28-year law enforcement veteran, starting his career with the Hartford Police Department in 1995. After serving 21 years, he retired from the Hartford Police Department and joined the Weathersfield Police Department in 2017. Throughout his 28-year career, Lieutenant Holton has served in patrol, in the bicycle unit, Mayor, that'll make you happy, disorderly control units, and as an FTO. As a sergeant with the Hartford Police Department, he served as a patrol supervisor and was instrumental in implementing officer-involved shooting protocols for the police department. Lieutenant Holton also served as the union vice president for six years, and president for six years. During his time here at the Weathersfield Police Department, Lieutenant Holton has worked in the patrol division and was the union president. Lieutenant Holton holds an associate's degree in criminal justice from Manchester Community College. Lieutenant Holton is assigned as the commander of the patrol division, and his call sign is 410. He's being pinned this evening by his wife Tara, with the assistance of his daughter Brooke and son Connor. So once again, please join me in a round of applause for our newly promoted lieutenant. Right now, we'll move on to our bi-monthly presentation. So in the spirit of time, and to get everybody to watch the Yukon Husky game, we'll keep this brief. Or try to. This is our bi-monthly presentation. As I told you the last time, last presentation was December and January. So going forward, in this year, we're doing January, February, this is the first one, and the next one will be March and April. The first slide here is the basic demographics. They have not changed much. The only change from last time was we now have 37 Caucasian officers and 10 Hispanic, but all the other numbers have stayed the same for male, female, entry level, and lateral. During the two-month period, we received 5,916 calls for service, which, over a 59-day period, equates to 100 calls per day, 33 per shift, 1,653 911 calls, and we conducted 1,901 patrol checks of businesses, parks, and residential portions of town, and that's what that looks like. We are out there, we're out blanketing the town, we're making sure, we're trying to hit every portion of town, and you have to think, that's with three to four officers on the patrol per shift. So they're covering a lot of ground in an eight-hour period, so I commend them for the work they're doing. Motor vehicle accidents, we had 83 motor vehicle accidents in the two-month period. We were down in January from December at 33, but then we went back up to 41 in January. Again, once, most of our collisions do occur in Silvestine Highway, Berlin Turnpike hours that they occur between 11:00 in the morning and 8:00 PM at night on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And this is what that looks like, again, Berlin Turnpike, Wells Road, Silvestine, congested areas where we get the most of our motor vehicle accidents. And as such, we deploy our motor vehicle enforcement into those areas. So far, this, in a two-month period, we conducted 932 motor vehicle stops, with additional 15 where the operator of the motor vehicle fled from our officers, which we did not chase them. If you look at the stats, the average is about 16 per day, five per shift. With that, 657 were by patrol, and 275 were by our traffic unit, which we instituted back in September of last year. You see the breakdown from refraction, some of this written warnings and verbal warnings for those stops. And there's our enforcement. To say the least, we're trying to, we're trying to get out there and try to prevent these accidents, targeting hazards, motor vehicle operation, we're doing the best they can. We've also arrested five individuals in a two-month period for DWI, issued 108 parking tickets, 64 all night, one handicap, and three no parking. But getting back to our traffic unit officer, he did have to return to patrol for the month of February, because I'm rotating my specialized individuals, my traffic unit guy, my, I have my Eclia officer, have my traffic unit officer, and I have my detective, who are on special assignments that I'm rotating on a monthly basis to cover patrol, to alleviate or reduce overtime, because I'm short on patrol, but also to be able to have these, give our officers an additional way to work. So with him only being on the road technically in his assignment for a month, he conducted that 275 motor vehicle stop, which he was averaging about 11 per shift, so just by himself. And he arrested one individual with outstanding warrant, and as you can see, from us instituting this unit back in September, he stopped alone 1,153 cars by himself. He's out there, he's working, but what we're gonna do is, as you're gonna see as we go forward, we touched on the fact that our accidents are occurring on Silvestine and Berlin Turnpike. His motor vehicle enforcement has been on the southern portion of town, we're gonna start shifting him to those areas to start working those areas, to hopefully reduce accidents by doing enforcement in those two main corridors. But, so that's his breakdown right there. It shows 276, I did say 275, but as you can see in the top column there, attempted motor vehicle stop warrant pending. He was able to identify an operator of a motor vehicle that took off, operator of a motor vehicle that took off on him, so he did an arrest warrant form that's pending. So that brings you to 276 number. Any questions on that? And this is why I just stated earlier, this is where he's been conducting most of his enforcement. We are gonna shift gears, we're gonna move him to the Berlin Turnpike, Silvestine, the next couple of months. He's reporting to now newly admitted Lieutenant Holton, who's here, so make sure he takes care of that. On the DD Detective Division, they investigated three burglaries, two residential, served 50 arrest warrants, made 108 custodial arrests as a department, investigated 35 disorderly complaints, and 17 noise complaints. One significant incident that occurred during this time period, there was a house fire on 22 over on Apple Hill. Officer Kyle Corstic responded to the scene, observed the house fully engulfed, proceeded to start knocking on the doors of the surrounding houses to make sure everybody was evacuated. Prior to FDI arrival, when they arrived, they were able to put the fire out. However, the surrounding homes did sustain some damage due to the heat. But for him, he was there, he got them out, he got them safe. And then, our new Fire Marshal Detective Robert Malinowski came in to assist with the investigation. So that's a plus. Rob was in the DD, he now crossed over to help Fire Marshal Dignati, so he now helps with the fire investigations. Animal Control, 46, four impounds, four sold, four general wildlife, roaming barking dogs, and three bites. Our officer retention and recruitment, Sergeant Lewis, Tony Gonzalez, Detective Nuberto Mendez, are expected to retire this August, followed by Detective Morris in October. In preparation for that, we have Recruit Ryan Gunny Smith, who's currently in the academy. He's scheduled to graduate in July, and hopefully off FTO in October to offset Detective Morris's retirement. We have Officer Emma Vorteshevich, who's a lateral, was sworn in January 16th. She successfully completed her FTO period, and now she's on her own, so that was a huge plus. Officer Jason Nunez, sworn in March 6th, he's currently on the FTO program, and I'll put my new lieutenant on the spot once he's scheduled to get off end of April. So we'll get him on the road, so hopefully that's gonna help out. And as you can see, Lieutenant Michael Conley retired in January, Officer Dave Gove retired in February. Community relations, we had graduation ceremonies for the dear classes at Webb, Highcrest, and Corpus Christi schools, that was a huge success with the fifth graders, the community truly loved it. Officer Sanzo has now started with the instruction at Emerson Williams, Charles Wright, and Hamner Elementary Schools, and we'll be having graduations for them closer to the end of the school year. The Weathersfield PAL program established a board of directors, and we are a 501(c)(3). We received that status, and we're working with the board to get this program up and running, working in three-week increments over the summer for the kids in town. So that's a huge success for us right now when we first started. And the child safety seat installation, there was seven. So for the PAL program, you can thank Councilor Pentzlow for not blowing up my phone 24/7 to get it going, but he did, so that's what he did.
24/7.
24/6?
Probably.
So with that, that's the presentation. I told you I'd keep it short and sweet because of Yukon. Any questions for me?
That was short and sweet.
24/7.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. The motor vehicle accidents, we have the 83 in the two-month period, do we know, like, the cause, or, you know, could you attribute them to speeding, or distracted driving, or we don't, you know? Your enforcement to try and reduce the number of accidents, where would the focus be? Would it be speed, or?
We would have to research each accident, see what the operator was cited for. It could be anything from running a red light, to falling too close, to speed, or weather conditions, traveling too fast for conditions, especially at that time, January, February, roads are icy. So depending on what type of accident they are, there might be a one car into a guardrail where somebody traveled, afraid of driving, establishing, went off the road, and struck something. So we'd have to research exactly what the cause of each accident was, but we could break it down.
It's likely to be scattered, though.
It would be.
Thank you.
Just two quick questions for you, Chief. On the chart, or the spreadsheet for motor vehicle enforcement traffic unit, yes, cell phone, admin, four misdemeanor summons, and then same thing with the two for the stop sign. What would merit a misdemeanor summons over, like, an infraction or a written warning?
The initial stop would be for the cell phone, and during the investigation of the stop, you might identify something else that attributed to issuing a summons, outside that, suspended, no insurance, or registered, something that would warrant a summons.
Okay. Yeah, it just looks like, I mean, a cell phone or a stop sign, it's, you know, doesn't rise to the level of DUI or speeding. So yeah, it just would be something further on. And then, the final question, watching the news tonight, the awful accident in Vernon, a police officer head-on with a, three passengers in the vehicle, and one of the passengers passed away. But it was reported that Vernon didn't have dash cam video of it, because they don't have dash cams in their police vehicles. I know we've instituted it on, you know, body cams, how about on all the vehicles? Are all our vehicles equipped with dash cams?
When we purchased the new WatchGuard system, we made sure our vehicles were equipped with dash cams, so they have dash cams and body cams. So when that type of situation occurs, even though the vehicle's not recording, as soon as the car detects an impact, it'll roll back 30 seconds and capture the video, so you capture it.
Good to know.
We do have it.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? If not, thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you, families, for coming, and for those that did the pinning ceremony. We will move on to hearings. There are no hearings under A1A. Under A2A, public comment. As a reminder, there are two public comment sections. The first is now, the second is at the end. We limit these to five minutes each. Please state your name and address, and I believe there is a sign-up sheet for you up here.
Sign-up sheet is where?
And I typically will call on folks, but Ms. Mead?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize that. Just trying to get you out for the Yukon game. So Clearme 373 Main Street. If you checked into your town email, you saw emails across Friday and the weekend. Paul and I were involved with a conversation about the stone sidewalks out in front of our home, and we met with the town manager and the town engineer this morning, and have come up with some great strategies. But I, I wanted to take a second and just point out an opportunity for the town. So the town has stone sidewalks. They come from the village improvement movement from the late 1900s. The story around town is that they come, the prisoners at the old state prison actually installed all of those stones. Don't know if it's true, that's the urban myth in Old Weathersfield. The town has properties, yourself, that have these stones. They're on the property at Keene, and there are a great number of stones around Cove Park. This is an opportunity, I think, for you all to get ahead of the curve and create a policy, a sidewalk maintenance policy, that speaks specifically to this material. These stone sidewalks are part of the inventory, the town's inventory of historic assets. They can't be treated like concrete and assumed that the replacement is concrete. They're historic, and we all know that if they're historic, that means they're expensive. So my suggestion is that now, looking forward, create a policy and begin to fund that part of the budget. The material is available, both in terms of new bluestone and in terms of historic stone. I found a contractor today who's got stone from Hartford when the sidewalks were pulled, just as an example. It is expensive to keep these sidewalks, but the town right now is enjoying somewhat of a renaissance, revitalization, et cetera, of Old Weathersfield, and so the town really needs to protect the features that are actually bringing people to the district. Presumably, the town is also enjoying increased revenue from the increased business investment down in Old Weathersfield. So thank you. Thank all of you who facilitated the conversation and cried thanks this morning, and we'll take it from there. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nancy Gangel, I live at 5 Jacob Drive. Good evening, Mayor Rell, Deputy Mayor Mazzarella, sorry, Councilmember and Town Manager Presley. I went to last week's ARPA workshop, where you discussed questioning whether students get more injured on artificial turf fields more than on natural grass fields. I'd like to add that all synthetic turf is made with toxic chemicals, which are PFAS compounds. When these fibers degrade, they can form a dust that is a potential source of lead exposure to children using the field, and that can lead to developmental delays and other health problems. I think we can all agree that our children and grandchildren are our most precious asset. Installing a natural grass field would help to protect them, and at the same time, avoid adding dangerous chemicals to our environment. I've read that the U.S. women's soccer team refuses to play on artificial turf, and also Boston's mayor, Michelle Wu, has ordered no new artificial turf to be installed in city parks, making Boston the largest municipality in a growing number around the nation to limit the use of this product because it contains dangerous chemicals. I hope that you will all vote for a natural grass field. I also, when I printed the agenda for tonight, I also noticed that there is about a million dollars left that's not allocated, and if I've done the math correctly, I'm wondering why that isn't allocated. why that isn't allocated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Not Hugh Sean.
No names.
Is it Sean?
Oh, it's Sean.
Is it Sean? I saw it.
There's no W's in Sean. Sean in green. Wait a second.
So I didn't know there were concrete already there.
Yeah.
Sean Fuss, 193 Clovercrest Road. Good evening, Mayor Rell and members of the town council. Nationwide, at the high school level, about 1 million boys play football, and about 7% will play in the NCAA. About 460,000 boys play soccer, and about 6% will play in the NCAA. About 114,000 boys play lacrosse, and about 13% will play in the NCAA. About 395,000 girls play soccer, and about 7% will play in the NCAA. About 100,000 girls play lacrosse, and about 13,000 will play in the NCAA. About 61,000 girls play field hockey, and about 10% will play in the NCAA. There's about $2.8 million left to be allocated, as I understand. Putting aside 1.5 million for a turf field is about 54% of that $2.8 million. Being conservative, a grass field costs about $800,000 to install. That's about 28% of that $2.8 million. That's a difference of about 26%, or a little over $700,000. That's not a small amount of money. What's the annual maintenance cost comparison between a turf and grass field? One source I found states that on the high end, it costs about $39,000 for turf and $49,000 for grass. In eight to 10 years, when that turf needs to be replaced, how much will that cost? It's going to cost significantly more than that $49,000. There's a growing body of research, scientific research, showing an increased risk of lower extremity injury to athletes playing on turf versus grass. Even professional athletes are expressing deep concern over playing on turf versus grass, to the point where NFL and even soccer players are refusing to play on turf. There's also a growing concern about the chemicals used to make turf fields due to the bodies, due to what it does to the bodies of the athletes playing on them. The chemicals can get into lungs, get absorbed through the skin, and even through cuts. As Nancy had just mentioned, Boston has recently banned them. There have been towns in this state that have decided not to redo their fields, turf fields, or even put a ban on them until they can find better materials. There's environmental concerns as well. Turf fields have a greater potential to flood more easier than grass. Another concern is about the stormwater runoff from turf fields and the impact it has on the groundwater and the environment around it. These fields also emit methane gas, which is a greenhouse gas. They also create a heat island by getting significantly hotter than a grass field. One study done by Penn State found that temperatures can get between 140 and 170 degrees Fahrenheit on a hot sunny day. Study by Brigham Young Institution found that turf is on average 37 degrees hotter than asphalt and 87 degrees hotter than natural turf. I find it hard to believe that having a turf field is going to increase the chances of a child playing in the NCAA, and even at the high school level, if it does increase the team being more competitive, is it really worth that $700,000 difference? The increased risk of injury to these athletes and these environmental concerns? I don't think so. I don't think this is a responsible decision now or in the eight to 10 years when this turf needs to be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you.
I moved chairs. I'm Sean, S-H-A-U-N. Don't ask me why, the U was for unique.
Make sure you sign in properly.
Yes.
All right. I brought a pen, too. All right. Hello, town council, Town Manager Presley and Mayor Rell. My name is Sean Green. I live at 15 Stone Gate Drive here in Weathersfield with my wife Christina and our three children and our dog Ruby. I mention Ruby because Joe Keisha's over there, and my dog's Ruby's best friend is his dog Jake, and they see each other every night on Keisha Farm. These are my first public comments I've ever made at a town council meeting. So as they say, first-time caller, longtime listener, right? However, I did send a letter to the council on September 19, 2022, and I'll read my email that I sent to the council today. I have been a resident of Weathersfield since 2011. My two oldest children attend Highcrest Elementary School, and our third will join them next year. My kids participate in many activities and sports in town. We are members of the Church of Incarnation, Pine Acres, and Weathersfield Country Club. I'm a den leader for the Cub Scouts and will be coaching a double-A baseball team this spring. My family and I have built wonderful relationships in Weathersfield. We love our town. Keisha Farm is in our backyard. Here are two photos from September 2022, as well as two photos from April 2023. I'll hand it to Clark, if that's okay. As you can see, as the season changes, so does our view, and we've already spent a few thousand dollars putting up trees just in preparation for something changing over there. Has nothing to do with you, Joe. I love your pole. It's a good view. I wanted to share my thoughts on Keisha Farm ahead of the item tonight, foray on the agenda this evening to approve ARPA funds for 1.5 million for just one multi-use synthetic turf field. We moved to our home in April of 2019 after living on Fox Hill Road for over eight years as we needed a bigger home to support our growing family. I wanted to, she got the third. And we could have moved anywhere in the greater Hartford area, but we chose to stay here in Weathersfield. We bought a home that was built in 2016. As you know, new construction is very, very rare here in Weathersfield. The home is on a quiet street with a cul-de-sac, a short walk to Highcrest School, and has beautiful views of Keisha Farm. We work extremely hard to have this home to raise our family, and this town council heard a very similar story from our neighbor and good friend, Lee Schwartzman, who also coaches our kids in swimming. Lee lives just across the street from Keisha Farm. As far as my comments on the ARPA funds, I'm in agreement with Mary Breton, who has been very vocal in the community about the ARPA funds at Keisha Farm. Mary isn't here tonight. I don't know if you saw her letter. It's also going to be in the reminder. I will also hand it to the clerk. So I'm not in favor of synthetic field at Keisha Farm, just like my neighbors said over here, Nancy and Sean spelled the correct way. You know, it's, I just prefer that my kids play on a natural surface, that's all. I believe it's safer for our children, and I think it's the way the game was intended to be played. Also, our schools are falling apart and are in much need of a repair. I would much rather see improvements made to our current fields and schools as that is the best interest of our children and our community. If the town does decide to apply 1.5 million to a synthetic field, again, where our current fields and schools need to be fixed, we should do it in an area where fields exist today, like Millwoods, Silvestine Middle School, or Fuller Field, for example. We heard a quote, I'll give you a quote from the NFL, Sean mentioned that, but the quote was actually from wide receiver Cooper Cup, and I don't know if you guys saw this, but it was in ESPN, and he says, "It's not even close," Cup said per ESPN Sarah Barshop. I know there's stuff going around the league right now. There's some issues. Hands down, we should not be playing on grass. Hands down, we should not be playing on grass, and that's all I'm going to say. That's Cooper Cup, NFL. As far as my comments, what's that?
You say you should not be playing on grass?
Did I misquote that?
Maybe.
Let's say that again. Sorry about that, Mr. Lesser. So Cooper Cup, I want to share a quote from NFL wide receiver Cooper Cup. "It's not even close," Coop said, Cup said, per ESPN Sarah Barshop. "I know there's stuff going around the league right now. There's some issues. Hands down, we should be playing on grass. Hands down, we should be playing on grass." And that's all I'm going to say. That was, that would have been a really big miss there. Sorry about that.
Wasn't consistent with the previous line.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Forrest.
It was a good line up, and then all of a sudden it was a little...
It was a good, yeah, I know. All right. I wasn't the 7% that made it to the NCAA to play baseball, okay? So as far as my comments on Keisha Farm, I'm not in favor of a synthetic field at Keisha Farm, as I just mentioned. I'm not in favor of an indoor sport complex at Keisha Farm or any residential neighborhood in the town for that matter. I signed a community, not complex, petition. I took the Keisha Farm survey and voted for open space. I don't even remember an indoor sports complex being part of the survey. I have concerns. The increase of traffic and noise, lights for play at night, a large sport bubble or building, the impact of property values, the wildlife moving into our neighborhoods. I mean, there's coyotes, there's fisher cats, there's bobcats, there's deers, et cetera. I walk with a baseball bat at night now because there's so many coyotes. I don't want them to come even closer. Joe, you can attest to that. Here's a, has a traffic study been done? If so, what are the results? And if we haven't done a study, why have we not done that? I think an indoor sports complex does have a lot of benefits for our children and future generations, but I believe that Silvestine Highway would be a much better location, or better yet, tear down all those motels on the Berlin Turnpike and build a complex there. I think we know what's going on in those motels, and it's disgusting to see those in our town. You know, and that we'll have better accessibility due to proximity to Interstate 91, Route 3, and other major roadways, and it'll be safer with traffic lights in a high-traffic zone. I would much rather see the ARPA funding go to improving the current fields in our town rather than the building new ones, as I stated earlier. However, if the town council decides to put in a field, I would prefer it to be all-natural as it's safer for the children and more cost-effective. But absolutely no lights. This is a residential neighborhood. I wasn't a resident of town for the Wilkes Farm decision, but it sounds like that area was preserved in the best interests of the neighbors and community. Why not do the same for Keisha Farm? We're fortunate to live in a wonderful community to raise our children, and we want what is best for them. I really appreciate everyone listening. Thank you very much, and good luck to UConn tonight.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to call everyone's attention to items 30226, 227, and 228 on the ARPA funding that's already been allocated. And $2.8 million has been thrown around tonight, obviously based on a few different things, but I'd like to call attention to, there are two line items for $450,000 apiece on there, another $200,000. They're ostensibly determined as loans for facades and small businesses and a selection of grants. So there's $1.1 million in those three line items, 450, 450, and 200. In addition, imagine my surprise when I saw that $200,000 of ARPA funds are going to be grants to nonprofits, which to Mr. Young's credit, which I know he's not here tonight, I bet you some of that will go to the Weathersfield Arts League. So we're up to 1.2. There we are, plus the 1.5 for the field. We get somewhere around that $2.8 million. For the life of me, I cannot figure out, last time this council met, you were nickel-and-dime and superintendent on the budget, and that was a budget increase that was obviously there. I was very passionate about it because I think it's actually a return on that investment. Right here, I see $1.1 million in ARPA funding, and it's a giveaway to very few folks for facade, small business, and grants. I see another $200,000 going to a nonprofit, not identified, mind you, but at somebody's discretion to determine who wins and who loses. And a field, what's the return on that field? To me, that sounds like a money pit, and I think it's been proven out today. It's an absolute money pit. So there's $2.8 million. Exclusively the $2.8 million is not allocated for ARPA funds because we want to spend that as quickly as possible, and much to Mr. Forrest's chagrin, we don't want to use it for regular budgetary items. If we take the $2.8 million that's talked about now, plus what I believe is the $1.1 million of absolute waste in those three items of 226, 227, and 228, add those together, that's almost a school budget increase. We can hire more teachers, have a new program for GoMath, but inevitably, we want to spend it on things that will benefit a slight percentage of this whole town. If you look at that whole ARPA funding sheet, golf dam, probably important. Truck with a plow, probably important. I look at this, for the life of me, $900,000 to just give away, plus another $200,000 for facade. Business owners are responsible. I don't understand. Nonprofits, you know nonprofits do? They raise funds or have endowments. I cannot make sense of the math on how we get to, we're going to nickel-and-dime $50,000 for a teacher in the school system, but we're going to spend $1.5 million on one field? One! I think all of you should be ashamed for that. It's ridiculous. The fact that you even made it on paper is sad to me. Absolutely sad. And secondarily, let's talk about the schools. We can't even get the slide fixed at Charles Wright. What am I missing? I don't understand, and I keep coming up here time after time asking about these numbers, and all I get is, that's what we're doing. I cannot make sense of how that math works in anyone's mind. A million dollar, $1.1 million of a giveaway, and we, again, we call it loans, but let's be honest, those aren't going to be paid back, they'll be forgiven, and a $1.5 million field, another $200,000, so 1.7 currently today, 1.1 already in ARPA funding, there's $2.8 million. The vast majority of the school budget increase is right there, and the rest of the ARPA funds, guess what? Whole school increase for the next fiscal year. But not one person's ever asked about that and said, hey, ARPA funds aren't restricted. Maybe we should actually use it for something that benefits the whole town instead of a couple teams, instead of a small business that, yeah, they may be struggling, so are taxpayers in this town. Not once have I heard anything from any taxpayer advocate up here at any of these meetings I've been to, and I know we're getting towards budget time, I have not heard one person be concerned about a million, $2 million, $3 million of funding. We could fund the schools and actually have a return on that investment, but inevitably, we're more focused on these other items that are going to benefit the sports community? Shocking. Facade development for people who actually own the buildings, they're taxpayers, why not make them do something about it? And tax breaks handed out to places like the Borden. It is, again, shocking to me that the return on the investment, not one person in this room has figured out, hey, we're going to spend a million dollars and we're going to make $0 back in taxes. This is depressing to me, disturbing, and just, I'm shocked and was appalled when I saw those numbers. So again, I think everyone here should take a hard look at that ARPA funding and really think about how it should be better spent, because right now, I see at least $3 million of absolute waste that we should be ashamed of as a town.
Mr. Young?
Sorry, Mr. Young, I didn't see you here tonight. Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Coppermill Road. I was looking at this list on the agenda as well regarding the items that you have selected for all this generous free money that you're handing out or that you received from the federal government. And all that free money has caused all of our citizens a heck of a lot of inflation. We just saw two banks go under over the last week and a half or two weeks because of how badly Washington operates and badly was handing out all that free money to you. All we got now is inflation. All we're going to do is get things that, in my case, I don't need. What I do need, and I do travel around, I need a better road. I don't see roads being repaired on here, and you know, Nick had just mentioned the benefits for the whole town. Number of these things are benefits for only certain groups, their special interest. They're not for the whole town, and they should be for the whole town, and your best bet would have been to spend it all on roads, because everybody that lives, most people that live in this town ride on the roads, and we have a lot of bad roads. And again, the money that you're allocating for fields, I'm not going to debate whether grass or turf, because I don't know enough about it, but I do know, I do know, we spend a million plus on turf, and then we got to have lights. That's another bundle of money. And how much revenue do we bring in? I've been B and M-ing for what, 15 years to this council, for the council, regarding where's the revenue? Where's the revenue that comes in from Coton Field? There's not one of you people who have ever said a word where it goes. Nor have your predecessors ever said a word while I was asking, where is the money? Nobody wants to talk about it. It disappears. They take it in, and then when the turf wears out, oh, we got to go for bond again. Another million dollars. That was Mr. O'Connor's deal 15 years ago. He pushed this whole thing... He pushed this whole thing through, him and his buddies. He brought little children in here to talk on this thing, oh, we need this, we need that, and we suckers are paying for what Mr. O'Connor brought to us back then. Now he's bringing it again, and he's on the council now, and this is crazy, Mayor. Absolutely crazy, how you have taken care of all the friends and buddies. You've done it with the historic society? Look at the deal they got. You've done it now with the Little Red Schoolhouse? You refuse to talk about that? We're paying for it all. And there's no words coming out of you people. Not one of you people have ever called me to talk to me about any of these issues. I talked about being men years some time ago. We don't have men anymore. They hide behind the dais. They hide behind their lawyer. And this council right here is one that is definitely one that hides behind their lawyer, and you know what I'm talking about. And you know, if we put 108 houses on the Keisha Farm, that is 55 and over homes, just like you see over at Collier Farms, you see them over on Demme Road in Newington, you see them over on, across the street from St. James Church in Rocky Hill. Those are nice houses, and people live in them, they bring no children to the community, but they pay taxes. And in this case, on the Keisha Farm, which you don't even want to talk about because you're hiding behind your lawyer, who made a statement, who doesn't want to show us what the statement even is. That's a real man. That lawyer is a real low-life person who doesn't want to show us his work, and you, Mayor, you should be showing it to us. You should have shown us the appraisal for the Keisha Farm that the town of Weathersfield paid for in what, April of that year, 2018? We didn't have the referendum until November of 2018. Nobody on that council there showed a copy of that appraisal. It just shows how crooked and dishonest this town is, and it goes right along, crooked and dishonest with this. Friends and buddies are the only ones making out in this. And I have other subjects to talk about tonight, but thank you very much. I know you're going to shut me off, but thank you very much.
Seeing none? Okay, we will move on to council reports. Any reports from boards or commissions? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, planning and zoning. At the last meeting, they approved the retail sale of cannabis in our town. They changed the wording in the zoning regulations to allow for that. I want to thank the chief for his comments on all the benefits of having cannabis sold in our town. So I looked long and hard for health benefits of cannabis, recreational cannabis, couldn't find any, but the planning and zoning decided to go in a different direction. That's all I have.
Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank the town staff and the Veterans Commission and you, Mayor, for putting on a great event. Lieutenant Governor was here last Monday night to honor our Weathersfield Vietnam veterans. We have about 400 Vietnam veterans that live in Weathersfield. Forty-eight of them came to the ceremony, and I think they really appreciated getting an honor. It was a difficult time in our country, and I think at that time, we did not honor them when they came back, and this was an opportunity to do that. I want to single out Rachel Mattioli, who did a lot of work, and Fred, the rest of your staff, who did a great job honoring our Vietnam vets. Mayor made an excellent speech, but it was a wonderful collaboration with the Veterans Commission and the other parts, so just wanted to mention that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any else? Any boards or commissions? Okay. General comments? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I'm going to see if I can get this to go to 10:30.
You won't have a quorum.
Got about another hour, so good luck.
I just want to make a comment about, public comment that was made at the last meeting regarding return on investments. And it was stated that, you know, certain spending is a waste of money and there's no return on investments. And one of the items that really caught my eye was town council, and the comment was that we spent $39,000, 39-plus, on travel for town council.
That's not what I said. I apologize. That's not what I said. I don't want to do this.
It's my turn to talk. Thank you. So when you look at what that line item was for, it was titled "Travel, Training, and Dues." And the $39,000 was for annual dues required for membership to CROG, which is a 38-town regional planning agency, and also for the Connecticut Conference on Municipalities. Both of those organizations helped the town tremendously with guidance, training, group purchasing, leveraging a number of towns for purchasing advantages, many things, which is a return on investment. The second part of that is the town council, the nine people that are sitting up here, we're all working for free, and we put a tremendous amount of time in to serving the town. We signed up for it. There's no question about that. We don't expect to be paid, but the way it came across, at least the way I took it, was, you know, these council members up here are going on junkets to Vegas and putting it on $39,000 of travel expenses for the town. What I got from my time on town council was a pack of business cards. I think there's 200 of them. I don't even know why I have them. That's the extent of the benefit that we get for being up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? I just want to agree with Councilman Lesser on his comments about the Vietnam Veterans Ceremony. That was a great event. It did tie in nicely with the next week, which was the 50th anniversary of the return home for our veterans. I appreciated Lieutenant Governor Bysiewicz for choosing Weathersfield for that distinct honor of presenting those awards, and, you know, I want to thank not only the town as well, but we did have some outstanding volunteers as well as businesses that donated their time, their staff, and of course, their food for that. So, job well done by not only Lieutenant Governor, but by the town and town staff. Any other comments? Seeing none? Moving on. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'll keep it short as well. You all have at your spots the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. That's provided to you in accordance with town charter. I will be providing a presentation of the budget at the next meeting along with the superintendent, and that will be part of the budget public hearing. There will be a series of workshops that will take place immediately following, the days following that, where you'll get to hear from each department and ask them any questions that you need to and drill down on that budget, and we look forward to that process and are here to assist as we move forward with this process for the residents. This will be posted to the town website first thing in the morning, so you'll all be able to access the document, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Sue?
Okay, well, tonight, we are starting a series of trial events with the new Granica system, and hopefully, I'll be able to figure out the ins and outs of it as soon as possible, but I think it's going okay so far. So just bear with me, and hopefully, you'll see the benefits of this soon.
Watch the video.
Thank you, Sue. Moving on to item B, council action number one. Kathy is here to talk about Weathersfield High School Esposito Field renovation contract award. For those that weren't here at the last meeting, this is the $75,000 that we had approved plus the $23,000 for the increased costs since going out to bid. Correct?
That's correct. And this is for the infield renovation at the high school baseball field. We had three contractors come in with quotes. We've recommended the Greenway Property Services project proposal, and we're looking to, as you said, Mayor, some additional funds just to meet the budget for the project.
Okay. Just real quickly, Mayor, you'll note too that as part of the motion for this item, it's also to budget appropriate the ARPA funds that you spoke about at the ARPA work session. We put it here as opposed to under the ARPA item because it came first in the agenda, and you can't approve the bid without also approving the funding, so that's why the disconnect. But it does not show up on the next item, just for clarification.
Okay. Councilman Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move to approve an additional $23,850 in ARPA funds for the renovation of the infield at the high school baseball field and award the contract to Greenway Property Services for $98,850.
Further discussion? I don't want to keep you here too late, but this we did discuss, even though it's not the lowest bidder, the lowest bidder did have experience in ball field maintenance, but not ball field renovation, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we have before us council action number two. This is the consent agenda. Nobody had any concerns prior to this. Councilman Forrest?
With acceptance of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. No ordinances or resolutions, unfinished business. This is the ARPA, or the American Rescue Plan Act allocation. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, Mayor. So as was discussed previously, there was a work session last week to discuss the ARPA funds that are remaining. During that work session, the council gave direction to bring forward a number of items, the one you just approved for the additional funds for the infield of the baseball field. In addition, there was direction to bring forward 1.5 million for the design and construction of a multi-use field. I'll say that, one note, that if a motion is to be made on this, I would just strike some synthetic turf field, because we have not made that discussion, and all these amounts are not to exceed amounts, just for clarification as well. The next one was $90,000 for the social and youth services training. That's three years. The first year will be $30,000, followed by $63,000 for the fire station exhaust extraction systems for stations one and two. Station three was funded previously under the capital improvement account, but these two stations, there was not enough funds to complete these. And then finally, the council discussed providing $200,000 that nonprofits may apply for for revenue loss due to COVID and other COVID-eligible projects. I will note that this was one of the items that the federal government stated was eligible for the ARPA funding. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Town Manager?
Well, just to clarify, you're saying we're not going to address whether it's going to be synthetic or it's just a field at this point? Is that correct?
Correct. Part of the discussion that you all had towards the end of that discussion was that there was some question with safety and other things about the synthetics that you wanted more time to talk about, but to prove amount that we could do the synthetic fields, if that's the decision you made later on. If you go with the grass field, the balance of the money would be rolled back in, and you'd be able to allocate those funds at a later date, or reallocate those funds.
Okay, that was my understanding. All right. So we're just voting to preserve the amount of money for that contract?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable striking out the word synthetic because I think it's disingenuous, if anything. I don't support a grass field there. And I do want to clarify some incorrect statements that were read into the record from the public. Town Manager, do you know how much we spent on maintenance for Coton Field?
I don't know. I don't know if Kathy perhaps knows, but we could certainly find out that information.
I know.
Okay.
And I know it was about $5,000, not $39,000 and $40,000 to take care of grass field. So that was number one, that was incorrect. I also know that the number of injuries went down dramatically when turf field was introduced because 90% of concussions that occurred during football are when a head hits solid ground. When there is actual artificial turf, the turf gives and prevents the sudden blow to the head. Numerous college coaches came here and spoke about that in public, and the head coach of Trinity College specifically stated, "My injuries went down by 75% when Trinity College put in turf field." Extensive knowledge was done. The other thing is, with regards to the safety concerns and the toxic chemicals, did we not actually have all of that turf rubber pellets treated with a special protective coat? I know we spent more money just to do that, despite the fact that it wasn't required, but we went above and beyond for safety. The turf that we currently have now, we actually paid more for to have that piece sealed so that it was protective. Is that correct?
It predates me, but Kathy's nodding her head, so she can certainly speak to it.
So that was correct. So it was done as a safety caution. I also know there has not been one single documented case anywhere in the United States of America of someone getting sick from playing on turf fields. None. But it's a great, 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 fair tactic when we start to sit there and talk about toxic chemicals. We went above and beyond to prevent that. If you actually listen to the scientists, they went out there and they do measurements on the field to measure the actual, I don't even know what it's called, toxicity that's released off the grass. 99.9% of that goes off into the air, just like it does anywhere else turf that type of rubber is stored. And so the actual impact is virtually nonexistent. But, you know, those that generally oppose this will highlight that. The other thing is, the average life cycle is not eight to 10 years. Coton Field went 15 years before they actually replaced it, so it's almost double what was being stated. And then as far as calling it a money pit, you know, we were spending literally $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 a year on Coton Field before they put turf field in. The drainage was absolutely horrendous. There were rocks, stones, and glass in the middle of the field, and yet now we have no drainage issues. That field is the most popular field in the town of Weathersfield. It has brought Friday night games to the town of Weathersfield, which is one of the only fields that has actually brought this entire community together every Friday night during football season and numerous other activities that take place on that field. And so I just feel like to sit there and say, well, let's take the synthetic word out is we're just kind of buying time when in reality, the best thing we could do is put a synthetic turf field in there, because the maintenance of a grass field would be astronomical, and we've already seen how we take care of our fields in this town. And one of the reasons we need a synthetic field is because of that. And so my personal opinion is I don't think we should strike synthetic because I think it sends the wrong message.
Further comment? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I will be voting no on this item because of the fact that there are four items included, and I'm assuming it's one vote for all four. I don't agree with spending a million and a half on a multi-use field, and I don't agree on... a half on a multi-use field, and I don't agree on spending 200,000 for nonprofit grants, particularly in light of the three examples that the town manager shared with us of people that have put in for grants already. So I can't support this.
You could always split them up too, if that's the wish of the council.
And this is up to 200,000, so.
Correct.
And what was mentioned is not set, you know, there's no agenda.
Those are just examples of what I've received unsolicited. Once we put a call out, I guarantee you we'll get more, but I don't know what those are going to be until we get them.
And those would be vetted through council?
We would have a.
Or your committee?
We would have a committee, a staff committee first review all the applications, make a recommendation to the council. You would get all the applications and the recommendation. You'll be able to determine what, if any, of them you wanted to fund.
Couldn't raise money.
Okay. And was Councilman O'Connor, was that an amendment to this?
No, it's to leave it as it is.
To leave as is? Okay.
I'm assuming that people would know that if we choose not to, we can strike it or not do it, correct? Even if it's written? Right. So if we take it out, then maybe that is more problematic than if we just leave it in and then choose to change our mind later, if that's an option.
Councilman Lesser?
Can you just explain? I'm not sure in terms of what you were saying, Councilor Carbon, in terms of the wording of taking in, taking out synthetic turf or leaving it in?
To Dan's point, I think if you take it out, you know, kind of, sometimes it makes more difficult to put things in than to take them out once they've been approved. So I think if we leave, my question was if we leave the wordage there saying, okay, we're going to do a synthetic turf field, and then as we're going through this process, we decide against it at some point, it's easier to just, and I see Town Manager shaking his head, yes, that we can then go ahead and switch it to a regular grass field if we choose to.
Yeah, all you're doing at this point is dedicating the funding.
Allocating the funds.
Any project moving forward would come back to you and you would be able to make that determination. Obviously, you'd be giving direction well before anything like that came back to you. So you'd be able to make those changes along the way if that's what the council desired.
Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. So I do support the funding. The town manager's recommendation was, after extensive research and interviews throughout town, that we need two to four new fields. We're probably only going to be able to fund one, but we need to meet the needs, in my view, of the children now and into the future. I'm not ready to say. I'd like to do more research to hear more. I've heard from Councilor O'Connor, I've heard from members of the public. I've done some research. I'm not sure if a grass field or a turf field is best if we put one field. I'm not even sure where the best place to put that first field, whether it be Mill Woods or Keisha. I'm still kind of deciding. I'm going to support spending the money, but you're telling me we're not deciding tonight whether it's synthetic or grass, whether the word is in there or not. Is that correct?
What I'm saying is you will always have the opportunity to change the amount, change the type of field, change anything to do with this. This is allocating the funds to begin to move the process forward. As you get more information, you can adjust that as you go.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Well, I would be inclined to vote no if I can't, if we can't remove the word "artificial" as well. And maybe if we voted on each of the items, then then could pass some of those. But I do think we need more information about the artificial field.
Well, how much more information do you need?
Well, I don't think you testifying alone is sufficient. I think we've got tons of letters today from people with all kinds of facts.
There's 20 years of information from Cottone Field. 20 years of information. Have you read anything on Cottone Field and all the studies they did when they put that field in and when they put the second field in? All of that information is out there. There's, it's not going to change. I mean, it's all been readily available. It's all in the public domain.
Well, I'd like to take a look at it.
Councilman Lesser?
Thank you again, Mayor. And not to belabor it, Dan, your points are well taken, but there is a significant amount of national research where professional athletes no longer want to play on turf field because of the potential harm, not just what was mentioned, Cooper Cup, professional, many, many, many others. And it's still a body of discussion and research going on, which is a healthier field to play on. I appreciate your comments about Cottone and all the good things that it's done for the town. For me, and that's why I was asking for the clarification, I'm not ready to say that turf is better for Weathersfield or grass. I am ready to say we need another field. I'm ready to vote for another field. But for me personally, I'm not ready to say that grass or turf is better.
Exactly how many NFL players have stated that will never play on turf again and that this destroyed their career? Do you have any idea?
I don't know the numbers. I don't.
Right. We know one that supposedly said that, but I couldn't find anything stated when I Googled it. So, you know, I don't think we should be saying, because one person came up and said that there's an issue with turf fields and therefore we should throw it out. I just think what we're doing is, you know, look at all the surrounding towns in the state of Connecticut. The best example that came up here was we're talking about Boston. All the surrounding towns of the state of Connecticut are doing this because they know it's a better field. It's longer. It preserves other grass fields because you can use these in rain, any type of weather. And there have been no significant injuries, knock on wood, but they can happen on grass. The concussions will absolutely go up on a grass field. That's factual. You know, Chuck Piori, a Weathersfield resident, head coach at Stonehill right now, was the head coach at Trinity College. He came up here and stated that. And you can go to the comments in the public hearing and you'll see him state that, that his concussions went down. We have all that information. And I just feel like, you know, I'm being upfront and transparent. I absolutely wholeheartedly support an artificial turf field because I think it's in the best interest of the town. And I think Cottone Fields proved that. And I think we have an issue with maintaining some of the fields we already have in town. I just don't feel comfortable spending $800,000 on a grass field and then hope we maintain this one better than we do the other ones. I just think that would be really foolish and it would be a waste of money and resources.
I guess I have a question for Kathy from Parks and Rec. My question for you is, do we have dedicated soccer fields, football fields, lacrosse fields? Or do they, is a natural turf field for soccer, is that also used for football?
So to answer your question, we have some soccer fields that are just soccer fields. But we also put soccer fields on top of baseball fields. We have our football field at Webb. That's also the outfield of the baseball field, and we do lacrosse on it in the spring, along with baseball in the spring. So we put fields on top of fields depending on the season.
Okay.
I'm not sure, and by answering this question.
Do we have to restripe those fields as, you know, I think a lacrosse field is different than a football field, which is different than a soccer field. I think soccer's the largest, goes down smaller.
That's correct.
Do we restripe those?
We restripe them depending on the season.
Okay. And then for Cottone, that is as a multi-use field. It's already pre-stripped. Soccer comes on. They know the lines, the boundaries. Football comes on. They know the hashtags and.
They all have a different color.
Yep, okay.
That's stitched. It's actually stitched into the field. We don't have to do any lining.
And then for Town Step, do they, are they the ones that were taking Town, Physical Services does the line striping for?
For all the other fields, the grass fields, yes.
There's not a dedicated person who's, this gentleman or this lady is the?
Generally, there's, there's a couple of people in the department that do the striping of the fields.
Okay. And maybe it's a question for Sally. Are they other, are they employed in other roles within Physical Services?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Any motion?
Are we going to line item them or are we going to do it on one motion? Because I personally, I'm with Tom. I have the nonprofit grants. I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay. So there, you did not, did you make a motion for?
No.
No. And if I'm hearing correctly, you would like to split these up into four separate items?
If that's possible. Is it green to everyone or?
You guys have?
Maybe two and I just pull that one aside. I don't know.
Someone's got to put a motion out there.
Okay. Here we go.
That's how we do it.
I'll make a motion, budget inappropriate ARPA revenue replacement funds for the following project. Not, you know, this one would be not to exceed 1.5 million dollars for the design and construction of one multi-use synthetic turf field.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
I'm going to abstain, Mayor. Only more information.
Six. Aye, two, nay, one abstention, if I'm not mistaken? Okay. Second motion. This may be unanimous. Pardon my just brief discussion. Mr. Town Manager, for $90,000, social and youth services training, that is for the Town Department to work with the Town Police Department to train in certain, and I heard at the last meeting, for the police training for human trafficking, which is an issue that may only affect a certain class.
Correct.
But would affect the entire town.
Oh, absolutely. It's been a lot worse than I think everybody even understands. And this, just for clarification, this is a social and youth services grant. So not only will the police be getting trained on it, but school psychologists, social workers, town staff, and community citizens will be invited to attend the training as well. And that's just the first year. It's not, you know, the whole purpose of this grant for social and youth services for the next three years was to provide meaningful community training to address certain needs of people that, you know, whether it be overdoses, take your pick, like we have issues in this town.
Throughout town.
That was the whole purpose of this, yeah.
Entire town?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion before us?
I'll make a motion to budget inappropriate ARPA revenue replacement funds for the following project. $90,000 for social and youth services training for three years or $30,000 per year.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Ayes have it. Motion carries. And the third item, the $63,000 for fire station exhaust systems, stations one and two. For those that weren't here, the Firehouse Three had already been approved in the CIAC grant, if I'm not mistaken?
Last year.
Last year. So with this $63,000, it will be for fire stations one and two. Three has been covered. So again, Mr. Town Manager, does this cover the entire town for our police departments or fire departments?
Yes, it does. This will complete the work. And again, these systems take the carcinogens out of the air from the vehicles running at the bays. When they put them in, they have to warm them up and take them out. This is a major issue, a major concern, and it's something that we've been trying to get done. So this is ready to go when the money's there.
Thank you. Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to budget inappropriate ARPA revenue replacement funds for $63,000 for fire station exhaust extraction, extraction systems for stations one and two.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. And our last item on here, $200,000, not to exceed $200,000 for nonprofit grants. Now, we have before us a handful of, if I'm not mistaken, just emails before us for this, potential use for this. Can I just get a little bit of clarification on the committee that the town manager looks to establish and potential vetting of these short requests?
Yeah, we're establishing a committee of staff. It'll be staff from social and youth services and Parks and Rec, staff from economic development, myself. There's a form that's been put together and there's a set of criteria that we'll be fine tuning, putting out a call for proposals from local nonprofits. And it will be for either revenue lost during the pandemic. There's a lot of groups that said they weren't able to do certain programs during the pandemic when everything was shut down. There was revenue that they've documented having lost as part of that process. And then also special projects that would qualify under the ARPA designation. So we would rank those based upon the criteria and provide those to the council for recommendation for funding.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, is there any set dates, you know, I know in looking at some of the legislation that has come out in the past on affected businesses or affected employees, personnel, there's a date, March 10th, 2020. Is there an end date to that? Do they fall between a certain period? You know, if somebody applies because they are not pre-pandemic figures on April 1st, 2023, would that be rationale for this committee to consider? Or is there a period certain between March 10th, 2020 and January 1st, 2022?
It would be, certainly the start date is when the emergency was declared by the federal government, which is in 2020, March 2020. And then the end date recently, I believe they ended the emergency as part of this. That would be the extreme. They would have to document that they weren't able to do events. People have been doing events, at least for the last year or so, when everybody's ramping back up. So they would really have to justify it. They couldn't just throw dates in there and say, you know, they have to show proof that they've lost revenue, haven't been able to do events because they weren't allowed to.
Okay. Further discussion? Yeah. I heard concerns of, is 200,000 too much? Should we look at this as maybe a two-round approach and reserve $100,000? We do 100,000 today and then a potential for 100,000 to consider, say, in six months, based on the applicants and the approval by the committee?
So I guess my, I just have a few questions about it. I think, first of all, I actually think it's too little. I think we've had this discussion before about when we originally, this had come to us, that, you know, if you're not able to fundraise, typically you weren't providing those services if you're a nonprofit. And I just feel like this is a drop. What are we going to give, you know, pick winners and losers like people talk about and then give X amount of dollars here, a little bits here, a little bits there? I'm not sure. I just feel like we can spend this money somewhere else. That would be more useful to our town as a whole.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I just want to clarify what the Town Manager mentioned at the last meeting. There was a request from the Historical Society for, I believe, 160-something thousand dollars.
That was an estimate, yeah.
And my personal feeling is we give a tremendous amount of money to the Historical Society from the town. They have an absolutely ridiculous lease that I don't even believe they're following the terms of the lease. I've been here three years now, and I haven't seen that Rope of Onions show up here. That was nothing but a joke. Here's a Rope of Onions. We get to have a facility to operate out of. The town is burdened with paying all, all of the maintenance. I believe the lease says that they're supposed to pay for the operating expenses. That doesn't happen. We paid $49,000 in change for an electric bill last year, and they have the audacity to ask for 160,000 more? I'm sorry, but that's just plain wrong. The other item is Keisha Farm Committee or Keisha Farm for All or whatever the nonprofit is called. We listened to presentations on what the plans for that farm property were for. We were assured that it wouldn't cost the town anything for their activities. And the following meeting, they asked for $3,000 to pay for a survey grant. And now they're going to submit a request for ARPA money? I just don't see it. So I'm going to vote no.
Councilman Pentola?
Yeah, the following up on the Deputy Mayor's questions or statements.
Yeah, the, the, following up on the Deputy Mayor's questions, or statements, I should say. What's the, I mean, I know you mentioned a process. Does council have any input of who is granted, or is it strictly staff? So to those two examples, would your staff vet it, and we would come, it would come for a vote to us for the funds to be allocated?
Correct. And you, but you would get all the applicants, you get all the information. You'd, it would come with a recommendation from the committee-
Okay.
-on what to fund, and, but you can agree with that or disagree with that.
No, and I, I tend to fall in, in Tom's camp on that, you know, especially those two organizations. But have there been any other nonprofit organizations that benefit the community that have applied to this thus far?
In addition to the two just referenced by the Deputy Mayor, we did have not a specific dollar amount request, but a request for any help for the folks that run the farmers' market because they were not able to be up and running for, for a long period of time, and they kind of had to deal with the loss of that revenue as part of that. But, so they said, you know, they would really appreciate it if we could provide some ARPA funding, but they did not give a specific amount. And I would say one of the, related to Keisha Farms, the, I mentioned a trail last time. Keisha Farm, the Friends of Keisha Farm wanted, they, they want funds for the greenhouse in particular, and potentially the barn. But the, the other one that I mentioned was actually a trail between the Keisha Farm property and High Crest School. And that was through requests from the Meadows for the Conservation Trust. Now, I don't know if it's using the hat of Keisha Farm or what, but that, that's where I got the request.
But that wouldn't have been in here. That would have been just the ARPA request, not the, what we're talking about now.
No, no, it would fall under, under nonprofit request, yeah.
Councilman Forrest?
Move to budget appropriate ARPA revenue replacement funds for $200,000 for nonprofit grants.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right. Fail? Do we have a number?
Yeah, can I do a roll call vote, please?
Sure.
Counselor Carbone?
Nay.
Counselor Clancy?
Aye.
Counselor Forrest?
Aye.
Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Lesser?
Aye.
Counselor O'Connor?
Nay.
Counselor Pentala?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Mazzarello?
Nay.
And Mayor Rell?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda. No. Excuse me, Mr. Forrest?
I believe 5B was next.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Lesser was asking me if we had, the next agenda item was.
Yes, that's the next one. No, 5A. 5B, approval of national opioid settlements. This came to our attention after the agenda was formalized on Thursday, but I believe posted online. And we do have information before us. Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, we did receive a document from the state notifying us that we have until April 18th to basically join the suit, to be eligible for the proceeds of any settlement from the National Opioid Settlement. It's specific to Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. We had been involved in previous ones involving other organizations that we have received funding for. So in order for us to be eligible for this one, we would need to send in the form with your approval, having been voted on. So that's why it's on the agenda.
Any discussion? Councilman Forrest?
Deputy Mayor, the Town Manager, are you looking for approval to join the lawsuit? Is that what the, you're seeking here tonight?
Yeah, I don't have a motion.
Per the motion that's on the agenda itself, it's a motion to approve and join the National Opioid Settlement involving Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, Allergan, and Teva. This is specifically from our county attorney's office. They said that's the language that we needed.
And, and that's what you're looking for?
Yes.
And is that your recommendation to do such a thing?
It is, yes.
End of counsel.
What's that?
End of counsel, Jack Bradley.
Uh, I, uh, Counsel, I move to approve and join the National Opioid Settlements involving Walmart, Walgreens-
You'll do it after.
CVS, Allergan, and Teva.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
So it's, it's already a settlement, or we would be joining in a trial that's yet to commence?
My understanding is that it's already a settlement, and that this is, we've been part of it, but now we have to do this next step to be part of the actual settlement agreement.
Right. Do we know how, I mean, since they've settled, do we know for how much?
I do not know the specifics of the numbers yet.
We haven't, we haven't. In one of the exec sessions, they gave us a number. It's, it's, it's not much.
That was for the previous-
That was for the previous-
That was for-
This is a new one.
The other.
Yeah.
So how, I mean, roughly?
I, I don't, I don't have a number.
Okay. I thought Dan was gonna give me a number.
What did we, what was it, like $18,000?
The last one was low. I don't know if I can publicly say, but it was, it was-
All right.
Wasn't worth waiting till midnight.
No, it was definitely not worth it.
Yeah, we, we did. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. And we will move on to the second portion of the public comment. This is, again, reminder for those, you're limited to five minutes. Please state your name and address. Yes, sir?
You're grassroots, 125 Walcott Hill Road. And Mr. Mayor, I'd ask for your permission to read off our text messages post the March 20th meeting, if you're all right with that.
Please.
Mayor Rell texted me, "Good morning, Nick. This is Mike Rell. I went back and looked at the budget for travel after your comments last night. As suspected, the line items totaled nearly $40,000 as for membership dues to CROG and CCM. I don't know if you're insinuating that we as a council spent $40,000 in travel year-to-date for the fiscal year. If you're looking for travel costs or reimbursements to council members, I can get those figures. I suspect they're pretty low." My response was, "Mike, my put of reflecting account 52212, titled 'Travel, Training, and Dues,' was 103.7% of the budget amount per the report run on February 2nd, 23, and that that level of spending on various items that I noted, including that account, seems to get very little attention, where the education budget seems to get a level of scrutiny that I believe should be applied across the board. I stated the account was travel. My mistake. It was in the account title." That was my own aside. I apologize. "If there are other items, the report should have been released in Excel with all the details as I requested at the February 6th, 2023 council meeting." Now, the statements made almost rise to, in my mind at least, and again, it's been a while since I've been in law school, but to slander. I don't want my reputation tarnished. I never said those were a waste of money. I asked for a level of transparency. I actually asked for it to be provided in Excel with account details so that we as taxpayers could see where the money is. The reason I get up here and the reason I come to these meetings is to make sure that people are being a good steward of our money. People pay a lot to be here. I never once said the work you do is, has no value. I get it, you don't get paid. I get it, it's a huge time commitment, and I appreciate that, and I think most of the people in town do. I never said it was a waste of money. My question was, why don't we get the details? If there's above your average, we should know all the accounts that roll up to it. If CROG and CCM are valuable, is there anything that's actually looked at? How much does it cost, and is it worth it? We say it's a return on investment. My point was saying solely, why aren't we looking at expenses that are all over budget, and why are we only focusing on the education budget every single time? So I never once, and I would ask to go back in the record, I never once said it was a waste of money. Not once. I never once said there was a junket to Vegas. I purely stated that the account was titled "Travel." My mistake, I should have said it was "Travel, Training, and Dues and Subscriptions." My fault, I'm willing to accept that. What I'm not willing to accept is to have my reputation and my comments taken, first of all, completely wrong, and I apologize for my break in decorum. That was my fault. Got in the moment, got in the moment. If you can point to a specific statement I made, and I will absolutely retract it in this public venue and apologize for it, I did not say those things.
Anybody else? Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I take exception to what the- Oh boy, it's too far down there. I take exception to what the town deputy manager, or town manager had said regarding people up here don't get paid. You're right, they don't get paid. You might get a little bunch of cards like you mentioned. But the fact is, people sitting up here get well taken care of by, as they take care of their special interests. Those special interests take care of them. We can see that with our gentleman right here. Mr. Forrest has been a long-term recipient from his goodness and his votes. When you look at the Historical Society and what they gain today, they get a lot of government, Town of Weathersfield money, thanks to Mr. Forrest, who, I don't know, how many years ago, 2008, Mr. Forrest, you signed up on that? Yep. And we have been paying ever since, and it keeps escalating. Now, tonight, I, I was kind of surprised, you know, I listened at the meeting last week, the special meeting, and we talked about nonprofits, and I kept trying to hear who the nonprofits were. Only tonight, it came out. Had to be a secret, another secret, or you didn't tell us before that. $160,000, the Historic Society wanted from the Town of Weathersfield ARPA funds? How could anybody even, even entertain that? The manager sent me their financial statements no more than three, four weeks ago. And, and what was the cash on hand with the Historical Society as of December 31st, 2017? It was $180,000. And as you went through their balance sheet, and you got down to their assets, subtract their liabilities, on, what was it, last year? They had over a million dollars in assets. And you were gonna give them $160,000? What, what kind of system do you run here?
For the record, we all just-
What citizen do you allow to even not pay his tax bill in this town? Nobody, except for the Historic Society and the Little Red Schoolhouse, the people that run that. You gotta stop this nonsense. Yeah, Mr. Manager, I don't blame you for any of this. I know you knew. And I appreciate that you put this information out, even though I've asked for it in other, under other managers and never got anything, okay? But the fact remains, all these secrets gotta come back up on the surface. And we gotta know who they are that, that's receiving benefits. And you're all up for your action this November. And I, I don't think it looks good. But you know, there's also some other things I want to talk about. Here, here on that list, you have some renovation of some, some football fields, or baseball fields, or whatever in the world they are. And as I was reading into some of this, you need to put in new drainage. What's your new drainage? Wasn't it done properly at the very beginning when they built these fields in, or was it done improperly? And if it was done improperly, who was in charge? Why do you now have to go in and put new drains in? That means you tear the whole field up and gotta redo the whole darn thing. Why do work twice? Well, that's because of our management that we had back then. They didn't give a damn. They just shed through for their special interests, just like these two guys and the guy down there. And nobody cares. And now, we end up paying for all of this. Now, Keisha Farm, tonight, in last, at the last meeting, what do they want? $8,000 for a greenhouse, repair of the greenhouse? They want $11,000 for, for trails? How many, no more than January of this year, one of the major people of the Keisha Farm Committee says that it was gonna be self-sustained. It wasn't gonna cost us anything, and all of a sudden, and we do know about the $3,000. And I was damn mad about that when we gave it to them, Mayor, for their survey. They should have gone out and, and gone out and took up donations if they wanted it. If they want trails, they should go out and get donations and put in trails. If they wanna do something with their greenhouse, put sweat into it. Same like these fields that these guys want. Why aren't they out there hustling for donations and working for it instead of having us? I don't even go to your games. I don't go to any games.
Mr. Young?
I couldn't care less about a game. I don't even watch it on television. And I have no interest in paying for it either, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Moving on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go UConn.
Go UConn.